Yes, it is right.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Seven of three, seven of four, whatever it is. And it appears that Dennis and Don will be voting tonight. Approval of the minutes of the July 18th meeting. Everyone ready?
I think most of me approved the minutes of July 18th.
Okay. Motion to approve in a second, any discussion? There are no discussions. This will be filed as they stand. Thank you. Own business. Come on up. Your own business, Mr. Martell Young Rich Road.
Donovan's just making you look good.
We are going to wait 30 seconds. It appears we have another member walking in the door.
In front of me. So I'll step down.
You will step down as well, okay. So Don, you will be calling it tonight? Beginning of the plan, do you say?
Yeah, still some easy ones.
The 6:28 addition. I don't know, seven.
He said one. Do you want to pass these down?
Here we go. These the same as the last one?
No. They kind of look really close, I can read it.
Yeah.
You say 7:30? Yes, and I highlighted all the plans in orange marker in the front.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, okay. I can't hear.
We had our sidebar today. And we've also had a meeting with Mike, I was like...
Morris.
Morris on Tuesday. Mike could not make today's something. And some of us, two of us, Kenny and I, Dennis on Tuesday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So some of you weren't there, that's why. A lot of work has been done up there. And we did come up, not having had a chance to look through this, we did come up with a bunch of, a bunch of few things that we had a couple of questions about. I like to call them housekeeping because I think that's truly what they are. And one of them was on page A, map A1. Question was, who delineated the wetlands? That's one of the questions we had. And how was, how was it done?
Yeah, we had, Mike Mariano came up and did the delineation. We had Chris Albert, who worked for me, come in and verify the wetlands after the meeting.
Might be a few things that if we have in writing or could be added to the final note would be good.
Okay.
Okay. And then there was one correction, I think it was a typo. That was the, yeah, under number two, Shoreland District within, Gionev had 200 feet and it's 250. You've got that fixed.
And that's the change in two votes.
Yep. You've got that, okay. On C1, I hope you use the same things on these. Mostly to do with the culvert sizes.
Okay.
And, you know, in the notes, clear details on how the water's going to get into the pond and are there going to be stabilized ditches or check dams? And you can just let us know that on the plans.
Yeah, absolutely.
It didn't show the differences, Brad?
No.
In the thing, like say if you have a 12-inch pellet, I'm just saying that's what you're using. You have 12-inch pellet. And then obviously down the road path, if you're using a 12-inch pellet, because you're having all this other water going in this whole, actually, succession.
So you kind of talk about the driveways, driveway culvert?
No, no, drainage.
Going to the drainage.
Because it, all the drainage pipes, it's part of our auto, hydrocap. So it's sort of size by auto cap. And there are, if you look at the label on there, it'll give you the size of this 40-inch, 8-inch, for instance, where that crosses the road. And then, and if you look down at Catch Base, it says Catch Base. That is 100 feet of 8-inch. And this is all high-density polyethylene pipe. So that's a black, plastic corrugated pipe with smooth inside.
Yeah.
So...
So that pipe size is 18-inch all over.
Okay, yeah. So when the water is down, do you retention form?
Yes.
In a perfect world, it's not woven cloth. You know what I mean?
That's right.
But if it does, is there a blanket, like a rock blanket, so that the water disperses evenly, you know, like, I'm not using the right words here.
No.
It's like a level spreader?
Yeah. You know what I mean, so they don't have the water?
Yeah, there's actually, there's an emergency spillway.
Right, I can help from some of that.
Yeah, so that's, that's at the very top of the form.
Yeah.
And if you look at the D3 detail sheet, in the upper, right hand corner, center of data.
Yeah.
That's a detail of that spillway. So you can see it's all made out of crushed riprap stone and it's fabric underneath it. So that would be the last resort if you had over 100-year storm. Or it was over our made of, of our design, that it's out of.
Yeah. Okay, I thought we were just looking at worst, worst case scenario. What kind of matting?
That's a, like a heavy, non-molding fabric underneath it. And it keeps, and then the stone goes on top. So what it does is it keeps the mellowing through the stone and washes it off.
And the sedimentation doesn't hit through?
No, it'll actually clean anything or remove.
Very much the fabrics we were looking at yesterday morning.
You see water on highways here.
Yeah.
Keeps the weeds out, just keeps it.
It's a fine matting, of course.
Yeah, it's like that shiny fabric that they put on the old fabric. It's not, it's not like a pleat of fabric.
All right.
In other words, it's made more, it's tougher than pleat of fabric.
Well, pleat of fabric, the water, by the way. The landscape fabric.
Did there be other changes, like the old ones in this one? Or did any changes to that?
A lot of it was the housekeeping. And then I think the only change was the, down on lot 12, we modified the angle of that lot. To make room for the path to stay in the town.
Okay. We'll, we'll get, we've got that one on.
Okay.
On understanding. But back up, let's go right back after that. These basins and such do need to be inspected. And how and who, and is it going to be part of the covenant of the...
Yeah, it'd be a homeowner's, private, homeowner's association.
Association, but it will be in there that if there's been the storm of the century.
Oh, absolutely.
A two, once a year or at least, or a, you know, a four-inch rainstorm or something, they will... If they're forgotten, they're not going to do it in good 10 years.
No, it'd be mandatory, it has to be done, probably every two years. But if you have a stormwater or a, I probably do, two, two that.
Two inches or something.
Yes. Then it's mandatory, it has to be done, it comes out of the association.
And it will be in the covenant?
Oh, yeah.
That people will...
Yeah, we'll have...
I mean, it will be in writing.
There'll be a stormwater manual. And there'll be like a 15-page document, and it's going to go through each item. For instance, Catch Base and Clean, these Catch Bases have a three-foot sun.
Yeah.
So they're going to, what they normally do, they'll take a rod, they stick it down there. You can tell it's in the sediment, and if it's built up over a meter's foot, they're going to suck out the Catch Bases. So that, that may just be all described in this, in this manual.
He, he's going to make us put anything out there.
Now, when this is all done and over with, Plan, not the Plan, but the Co-Forcemen will have a copy of all this.
Yeah, it'll actually, yeah, it'll be part of our submission. And normally we don't submit that to the very end or part of the, you know, we got to make sure, you know, in case we add something, we want to make sure we add that into the stormwater. So it's not something we can really get now because...
No, it would be at the end.
And the only reason why, like, I think something like that's important is because we're all going to read the passages. And where there's a problem, and people decide they really don't want to deal with it, the town has things taken after. Right. It gives the town...
It needs to be kept, you know, sorry. It needs to be in a manual, and you keep the manual.
Yeah.
If you ever wanted it, it should be kept on file. Well, assuming it's done every two years, it's been mandatory that the town gets a copy. Last paperwork for Kennedy, and everybody else. You have to keep it in file, that's fact, and masses, a lot of it, you can do. And they ask you for it, you better have it on file, it updated. You see either way, but that will be in the...
So that's one of the biggest problems, right, on that, they don't have where it's at, exactly, on what exactly happened.
And for the next 10 years, it'll be my job to really sit at the store.
We don't usually record it at the registry, that's not...
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, sometimes it's, it's, it's not, it's not all over.
Now, on C3, on the old page, note number 10. I was just a little, I guess I would ask you to explain it a little bit. I mean, it, it talks about your weight.
So C3, note 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a six-inch perforated pipe, so that's a underground.
Yeah.
And what we normally do, we cut the, to subgrade, we look at the road, and if you've got water that's weeping, you know, out of the subgrades. So something visual as, as you're constructing the road, then you put an underground drain pipe along the side and collect, collect that water. So these, Arnie has cut the subgrade, we looked at it, and we didn't have any weeping water. Usually it's in a big cut, you know, into like a 15-foot cotton road or something, probably want to have it in it. We didn't have a lot of big cuts and fills.
Or, or ledge, around the edges.
Ledge.
Right, right.
None of that, okay, so.
That's, that's lucky.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's lucky, yeah.
Nothing but a ditch.
But you'd see it like in the spring, it was starting to bleed out of the road, and that's the fear that you don't, you don't really have any of that.
One of the other things that might be sort of putting the horse before the cart, but I was just wondering, is even, like, you've given us written details before, but how about a, a written phase plan that we could just have? It helps in permitting, it helps in, in all kinds of things, not only for us, but for you, that, you know, we're going to do, you know, three houses in so long, or, but starting from point A, which is starting from now. You know, the roads going to go in, the trees are going to go in, or whatever. You know, just so we have the, a phase plan to let us know when, where we're going with this.
Yeah, I committed to a few ideas with Ken already, and Brendan actually, and I was, you know, I'm worried, you guys, you know, I'm not building projects, considering that. And at the same time, if everybody's concerned, you know, I put $20,000, stay in the area, a place for a certain, all this traffic, I said, well, just give me three permits a year. This way I'll be an old man by the time I pull the last one, so at least I have a steady, I know, I'm an old man. So, you know, I ran that by Ken, he says, you know, good idea, if you want to offer it to, you know, a justice, so he's got it.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of, it's a very good gesture, and it's something that...
Sure.
We can very easily say, hey, you know, well, this is not going to be whatever.
Yeah. Well, it's trusting me and trusting you guys too, in the sense that maybe trusting me and, you know, I thought, I thought about one lot a year, I don't think I'll live one year after, you know, but, so, yeah, you know, I'm committing to free, and I don't want to build one a year, like free, but, you know, I did, I'd argue that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that would be, again, just...
So you, what, have written up in a letter form?
Yeah, that's fine.
Addressing the board?
And it's not, we're not going to ask you to get it stamped and verified, and you're not going to change your mind, but it is the best thought-out plan that you have right now, at this point in time.
The plan is just a plan.
The plan is a plan, that's...
No, it's not guaranteed.
You're not guaranteeing that's what you're going to do, but this is what...
It's giving everybody breathing room.
This is what today's plan is, this is what we're going to do.
Right.
And, I mean, you know...
I just got to go to a town and hopefully get me a tax break, so if I can't build on that.
Sorry, you're in the wrong department. You're in the wrong department for that.
Look back on that later, it's general war.
The, the, the meandering path, the width of that, now on one of these, I couldn't figure it out. They're saying the meandering path, now not the driveways to 13 and 14, but how wide are we looking at?
Six feet?
Yeah, we actually, actually we've got that down to 12, no?
Uh, that's... You got it down to 12 feet?
Yeah, we did have it wider, we reduced it.
Uh, yeah, I, I thought I saw on the old thing that it was close to 20.
Oh, it was, it was, and, yeah, it was reduced to 12.
EEP is what it was for, for the 12?
Yeah.
Is that, that's from DEP?
Well, that was a comment, so remember, we haven't, we haven't done the final application.
I know, I know you got it.
So there will be some...
Modernization.
I didn't make it work. If they wanted to go to 6, I'd have made it work. 12 would be perfect, you know, if somebody walked by, and broke, you know, kitchen garage, or whatever, like this. So they're not...
They're going to hold you to 6 in the Shoreline zone. Once you get to that 250, like, just shrink it down. Okay, so we could, yeah, so we, if you want, we can make that change.
Well, I'll just, we'll do it like that, let them, see what they want to do, and I have no problem with 6 working at 6 feet.
If that's what Shoreland says, that's, I mean, then that's what we have to have, that's what we have to have, and we're done. And the other thing, with, you meant mine?
Yes.
That's helping. Is on E1, you had, like, you suggested that we have a note, 13A, showing that you're using Best Management Erosion Control, someone certified in that. And it would be note number 14, actually, I think, something like that.
Yeah, we can, and, and that we're going to use Best Management Practices, or?
That, to somebody that is overseeing that, is my understanding.
Yeah, that, someone certified.
Certified, that's control, and so on.
It's a certified, insured, it's, it's paid off.
Are we hiding it? Are we hiding it, guys? You've got it on the side over?
Just make the note there, just make that, so that note is clear.
Yeah, we got it, hiding it, either, if you try to bring it up, it's, it's way...
Yeah.
Okay, so, dust control, huh huh. That's something we've heard about, dust control. Personally, I think it's Brad, don't let Arnie drive one of those machines.
I think that's what it is.
Well, the dust is all over, and, as of, I wanted to see that, next to the, well, that's a horn property I'm working on now.
Yeah.
In the Han family.
Right.
It's not, it's not my property, but it's going to be seen, I'm going to wait a month. I just spent, I didn't tape, tack it by, see it, all the lots, and those were, I spent a whole over my buddy, so much hours, and, and now we have no rain, but, you know, so now I'm just struggling to get, it's all, it's there, it's already stabilized, and they haven't washed out. But you really can't see it, they're there, the mornings you come up, it looks beautiful over there, it's there, it's fur, but, so, there's no weather, there'll be no more dust, dust up there. With this program, I'd say probably by, probably by Tuesday, we don't have a horn drop, and then dust, or, so dust should be gone. And when they're doing the road, building the road, then I'm going to hire a company to do the road, and fight for the old dead roads, right? Set me, set me on the highway, so that'll be under control.
Okay, and that's on the lady's property, and then you...
Yes, that'll be all, that should be all, I'm going to wait till the end of the month, all your heavy equipment just won't go away.
And the other note we had is, going back to lot number 12. If anybody wants to look at, where you can clearly see it.
C3.
So you've changed that, but you're still in the shoreline. Where...
We're back 100 feet.
You're back 100 feet.
Right, we're back 100, so the house is going to be where the other house is on.
Yeah, so that building setback shown in the dotted line. You see it's all lines, property line, of course, and then, and the next line is, is a setback line. So that's 25 feet from, from the property line and 100 feet from the road.
But does it have 250 feet of waterfront?
It does not have any, for sure.
It has none, but it's still in the shoreline, shore lines up.
The lot is...
The lot is.
Is in the shore.
Part of it's in the shoreline.
Yeah, back 100 feet.
But back, back 100 feet. That's, do you know, on that one, that's a little iffy thing.
Yeah, so I talked with the town land use attorney on that today, and he said if you had one foot of frontage, you'd need 250. But if you don't have any, then he didn't see an issue with it.
It seems to me keeping the house back, but really, this kills both houses, because now you've got a house, you've got a spirit of a house is back yet, and then you get the same thing, that person's looking at the front of that house, and they, you really got no, no privacy, you know? But I plan on planting trees in between each house, and, I mean, I'm going to make it look like Disneyland.
But we have, really, I don't know if we do amusement...
We don't want to screw up the day.
But you don't want to be trees, drugers, and stuff, so...
I don't want to drive by there, and she said, oh, it's raining around, you know.
I remember I stayed with trees on the left, that's going to be, instead of having the houses scattered behind each other, just...
So according to what you found, the phone calls you made?
Yeah, and that was just a verbal from him. We had a discussion, and I had sent him a copy of the plan, and Mike's concerns as well, too. He didn't see it the same way, thinking land use-wise, he didn't see an issue with it. I was saying, if it had one foot of frontage, it would need the 250, but held back as a backlot, he didn't see it as an issue.
Are you saying 250 feet of, of water, or 250 of road frontage?
Water.
Water.
So it's here, he specifies the road frontage.
That's from Southern Maine Regional.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So going around the Hammerhead, is that 200, is that how you think?
It is not 200. Yeah, we did discuss that in our last meeting. Our feeling was is that those lots are out of the Shoreline District, that portion of the lot. So that's part of that cluster subdivision. And with the cost of subdivision, there's no requirement for a roadway. So, so that, like I said, that portion of the lot, we did have our attorney, we answered that back to Southern Maine Planning, had our attorney kind of interpret that as well, and a sort of interpretation of the regulations.
But those three lots are not within the shoreline?
No, the, the, the portion of the lot where the, where it connects to the road is, is not in the Shoreline District.
Therefore, it doesn't mean the road from it?
If it was in the district, then I guess it would be replied by, you have to have that 250 feet on the water.
On the water.
What is the waterfront?
250 feet, we do have that for both lots, and that's measured in the...
For two of the lots, you have that. Now, you've changed...
13.4.
Yeah, for 13, now you've changed the configuration of 12.
Yes.
So what is that now? Was it, was it 2084?
Well, yeah, there's...
I'd like everyone on the planning board to get their drawing cards out, we'll work a plan use charge, Page 14. Is it the same in the white book as the red book, or the numbers ever, or the page numbers?
I'd stick to the red one.
Yeah, okay. Subdivision, blue and subdivision, but I think it's probably the...
Can you show it to me, say?
Yeah. So land use charge under residential structures and uses. And heading is planned unit development for a cluster development.
Back to the middle of the page.
Everybody there?
Yeah.
All right, if you look over to Shoreline Zone, planned unit development, cluster development is not permitted in the Shoreline Zone.
That's the same thing Southern Maine Regional said, and then notes.
Yeah.
Probably months ago.
Yeah, yeah, I got that right here.
Yeah.
But, so those lots need to be moved out of the Shoreline Zone? I guess. We don't need to worry about how big they are, or how much road frontage they are, or how much shoreline, shoreline they have, because they're not permitted to be in the Shoreline Zone. You can't have lots in the Shoreline Zone. Not, are you looking at Page 14? Open up here, go open up that other one, right there. You just look at the land use charge and go across, and it tells you. Just planned unit development and cluster development under, you see that one, Dennis? Yeah. Just carry that across, third from the right is Shoreland. Not permitted.
So the question is, can you have a cluster with those cluster lots in it?
Well, this particular proposed development meets the criteria of a planned unit development and a cluster development. And those lots meet conventional as well.
And those lots meet conventional as well, except for road frontage, which is all bad.
Right, they don't have the 250 feet on the road, so we couldn't, and, but that's beside the point.
So what's your?
So I'm pulling up a little bit, I think Gavin was just saying, you want to put the zoning ordinance up there?
Uh, not really, it's pretty simple. I mean, we've looked at it, it doesn't end there, but we talked about this three months ago, too.
So what you're saying Gavin, is the lot 12, 13, 14 can't be part of the cluster?
No, they can't be within the shoreline zone. Because if you look on page, now I'll refer to the definitions, go to page 30 in your zoning ordinance, planned unit development.
I guess, I just don't understand that. If, if I own, say if I, like lot 14, that lot right there, if I wanted to build a place up there, a house, there'd be no reason for anybody to say I couldn't.
That's not really what we're talking about, Dennis.
Okay.
All right, so page 30, planned unit development. I can read the definition, it's a rather long, but I can refer to it there. We'll see there. Land under unified management, planned and developed as a whole, according to a comprehensive and detailed plans, including street, utilities, lots, or building site, site plans and design principles for all buildings intended to be located, constructed, used, and related to each other, and for other uses and improvements on the land. Development may be a single operation or a programmed series of operations, including all lands and buildings, with provision for operation and maintenance in such areas, and improvements in facilities necessary for common use by occupants of the development. So it most certainly meets that definition.
That's great. So I think my, my feeling is that.
This right here is a, are the plans for this unit development, there's no, there's no getting around it.
These are the cluster lots, these conform with the shoreline.
I'm talking about a planned unit development right now.
But these, we go into the shoreline regulations, and that's, that's why we have the larger lots, which is 250 feet of frontage and related.
Well, there's nothing I can do about it, because I'd have to, I can't change the land use charge, so you're not permitted to do that.
You do understand, he could just gift these lots and create them and not even be here for subdivision?
I don't have anything to do with that, I just uphold the zoning ordinance.
I know. And I, I don't know about that, but.
Well, that's best I can.
Yeah.
But I guess this is what I was trying to ask Gavin. If Arnie says, instead of a 22 lot cluster subdivision, we're gonna do a 19 lot cluster subdivision. And eliminates those three lots, I would look at the subdivision plan, and that's what we would be looking at. And then if down the road, he decided to build places on these three different lots, they won't be part of the subdivision.
Well, you're looking at a couple of different plans of operation there. I'm pretty sure that that shoreline zone would be rolled into the open space or common space of this cluster subdivision.
But they already have more open space than is required.
Well, that's not for me to really figure out.
But I mean, under the formula, is it?
Yeah, under formulas, and you're from Southern Main, there's more open space that we need.
Well, that's okay, that's not what I'm worried about.
I know, but to be open, what Dennis is saying is we're looking at a 19 lot subdivision.
No cluster subdivision.
Cluster subdivision, 19 lots, okay? That's what we're, that's what we're looking at. What is there to stop them? He still owns the land from doing three individual sales later down the road.
That's, that's not my purview. I just need, I'm just looking at the current plan.
You're looking at the current plan, I'm.
That's all I'm doing, I'm not looking at the future here. That's for them to decide what to do, we need to be conforming to the zoning ordinance. This plan is not conforming to the zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance is an interpretation, quite a bit.
I can't interpret, this is the, this is the land use charge, there's very little interpretation, it's pretty much black and white.
Yeah, but your interpretation would be, is these cluster lots.
Is it a planned unit development? My interpretation is yes, it's a planned unit development. Okay, is it a cluster development? Yes, my interpretation is that it is a cluster development, so it's two, and so that's all I have to say, I mean, I can discuss it more.
How do you see it as great? Sorry? Kansas City saw it as great.
Well, you've got full-size lots, so it's not a cluster lot. They didn't take the reduction and drop these down to a small lot. It's, it's two acre plus with 250 on the waterfront, which, because we get into the shoreline zone, they have to be conforming in that aspect. And working with Mr. Martel who passed four or five years, the avenue, as far as the state of Maine allows you, he could be drifting these lots, he could build a road without any plan award review, and he can gift a lot to every one of his kids, brothers, and nieces, and not even be in here whatsoever. So.
I don't think we need to worry about that.
Yes, we do, because this is exactly what you're gonna drive him to do. He's going to build his road, he's gonna develop the shoreline, and he's gonna build all these lots, and we won't have any regulation, what do you have here?
Let's open the planning board's question.
Yes, that's exactly what.
That's what we're doing.
But how is it right in terms of a planned unit development?
Because of being the shoreline regulations, it's size of the lots.
Because according to like Southern Main Regional, like sort of point one was that the cluster subdivision part, but these, these lots have to meet the 250 foot. Frontage, which they do. So it feels like that kind of gets checked off. Then it comes to the second part, and I don't know what your response was to this. Do we get a copy of that?
Yeah, you should have a copy.
I didn't have a copy of that, of the response.
Oh, of the response?
I do have a copy of that.
I don't have a copy of your response.
No, 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 we have a copy of Southern Main's letter, but we don't have.
To me, that feels like where we're getting touched up, is the planned unit development.
Well, it's a planned unit development, here's the plan for the.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's arguing that it's not a planned, okay, development, that's for sure. What we're saying is to have.
Yeah, I have two more.
Is what we're saying is. The builder, Mr. Martel, has the option of saying, my cluster subdivision is 19 houses. And they are, and they're smaller lots that they're on. Not on the, are 250 feet, but not on the shoreline. And that's it, and that's what we look at. And that's the end of it, and we, we do or don't give them the permit for that, because it complies with this, you know, it has nothing to do with waterfront. And he goes off and he does it, and we have say over it, we have jurisdiction, because he asked Apollo what he says he's going to do, you know, can he become a permanent member of the, go check on the subdivision? And then in six months, he builds a house on the water. And he has a right to do that.
So can we kind of?
With no guidance from us.
Can we just adjust what their responses, talk to the piece of the planned unit development?
What do we got?
Oh, it's kind of like. But maybe wait till you get it in front of you, so that.
Well, we did, we did consult with the attorney as well, and had some discussion with him, so that's, that's what we're responding to. We did send this back to the Maine Regional Plan. I have, I did call Abby today, she wasn't, so I haven't heard anything about this one.
Some permits on that.
Yolli, would you like me to read the zoning considerations paragraph of the S M E D C? Is this, Brenda, is this verbatim of the zoning consideration in this document? Okay, no, I just wanted, it's okay if I read the original letter from Southern Maine to us, in terms of the zoning considerations in this. I mean, I got them both right here.
I think that the other one is.
Is their response. Okay, all right, so I'll read the letter, I'll read the letter to the planning board on the zoning considerations, I don't know if anyone approves or denies the other document
I don't know if I had. I'm just reading, I had, I already have.
I thought you were gonna read this whole.
I thought you wanted to read the zoning considerations.
All right, the proposed cluster subdivision is located in the Grove District, and a portion of the land is also in the shoreline district, as part of the parcel of Butts Grady's Lake. The proposed cluster layout allows for flexibility in lot dimensional requirements, including minimum lot size, which the applicant is taking advantage of. However, the calculations noted in the sketch plan to determine net residential acreages do not appear to remove portions of the lot utilized for stormwater management facilities, which is required. Furthermore, cluster development, which the proposed subdivision meets the definition of, is not a permitted use in the shoreline district. Therefore, based on my interpretation of the town's ordinances, three proposed lots that are within the shoreline district cannot have the cluster development standards applied to them, and must meet the dimensional requirements for the shoreline zone, including the road frontage requirement of 250 feet per lot. The board should discuss whether or not the proposed subdivision meets the definition of a planned unit development, which is also not permitted use in the shoreline district.
Why don't you read the response to the first one before you jump into a second?
Because I was reading this document, that's what I was, that's why I was asking which document did we read.
Well, I didn't read the response.
They are.
Understand that, well, they can, I'll finish this document, they can read, or they can read the response.
Actually, I want to bring the response to them. So Joseph H. Engineer says revise our open space calculations to now deback the stormwater lots, so that was included in that shoreline of the place. We have consulted with the developer's attorney, Leah Horation, from Virgin Island Attorney's, regarding shoreline district lot size requirements, and our response is as follows. It is my understanding that you intend the shoreline lots to meet the 250 foot shore frontage requirement. Question, as I understand it, is however, is whether those lots must meet street frontage requirements specified in section 4.33.13 of the zoning ordinance, i.e. 250 feet. So what we're, what we're talking about is that, that 250 feet of, of frontage on the road, and this is, this is what we're asking for, is it not have 250 feet. I do believe that 250 feet is free frontage required identified in section 4.33.13 of the zoning ordinance, has to be met for the shore front lots, because the plan could indicate that the location of the street frontage of those lots are not outside the shoreline zone, of the subdivision regulations, and equally allow the planning board to reduce the street frontage for cluster subdivision. It provides as follows, the planning board shall allow lots within the cluster development to reduce in lot area, lot frontage, and lot width, below the minimum normally required. Because the shoreline lot, street frontage is not located in the shoreline zone, I believe that the street frontage requirements could certainly reduce below 250 feet required for standard subdivisions. I have identified no provisions in either the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations to indicate that any portion of the lot located in the shoreline zone, and none of it can be considered as part of a cluster subdivision. While section 2.7 of the zoning ordinance prevents cluster subdivisions in planned unit developments in the shoreline zone, a portion of the lots issued is not within the shoreline zone accordingly. I believe that those portions of the lot located outside the shoreline zone are properly subject to cluster development standards. So basically, in this, what it's saying, you know, that where we're connecting to the road, we're out of the shoreline district. So that's why we've shown those, and if we did try to get 250 feet in there, it's just gonna be a lot more development, we're trying to minimize the development.
But the lots themselves are within the shoreline zone.
No.
A portion of the.
A portion of the lots is what you're saying.
So it's the dotted line over there?
Yes, that's 250 feet, that's the shoreline zone, yes.
So is it like half? Sixty percent?
I think it's a majority of the lots is in the shoreline zone.
Which you're accessing the lot outside the shoreline district. So in reality, if Arnie wanted to build a place, say on lot 14, that's not in the shoreline section at all, that would negate what we're talking about in the ordinance saying that. Am I right Gavin? If he's not utilizing for anything other than lot size or ownership, it's irrelevant if it's on the shoreline zone.
Not according to the zoning ordinance.
You mean if he's building outside of that?
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
No, he can't use portions of the lot, that's.
You can't use portions of the lot?
Of course, a lot can't be in the shoreline zone, it's still part of that, and that's what the zoning ordinance says.
But you just said use it, so that's why.
I'm just trying not to say too much, I'm, I already stated pretty much what I have said. I can read the second, second paragraph of Southern Maine, and we can read their response to it if we want to get there, or we can continue discussing this.
Oh, go for it, so we have.
All right, second paragraph, everybody?
Yeah, we've got you.
The board should discuss whether or not the proposed subdivision meets a definition of a planned unit development, which is also not permitted in the shoreline district. If the board determines the proposed development isn't acceptable use for the shoreline district, the applicant will be required to get a conditional permission from the planning board. For any lots containing a portion of land within the shoreline district, the board should encourage the applicant to cite the house outside the 250 foot offer from Grady's Lake to protect active features and water growth. So that's the second paragraph of zoning considerations. So that's the second paragraph of zoning considerations.
And our response is Joseph H. Engineer has conducted consulting with our developer's attorney, Leah from Burton Robinson Attorneys. We've gotten the Shoreland District building setback, and our response is as follows. I respectfully disagree with this statement. I compare that the Shoreland Zone itself is defined in Section 3.2 of the zoning ordinance as land area located within 250 feet horizontal distance of the normal high water line of any great pond or river. However, the zoning ordinance does not require buildings to be that 250 feet from the high water mark, rather it provides express guidance about how far back structures must be located from the water in Section 4.33.3A of the zoning ordinance requires that structures be set back only 100 feet of a great pond, not 250 feet, as Mr. Sherman's memos appears to suggest. Accordingly, it is our belief that reading of the plan and invidious language of the zoning ordinance does not support the conclusion that homes must be cited outside the 250-foot. And this, when Leah was at our last meeting, she is an attorney that works with all the different towns of Maine and actually rights ordinance and regulations, so we did hire her to make sure that we had correct interpretation of these regulations, zoning and subdivision regulations. So a lot of thought was put into this, these answers, this isn't just, you know, something that we came up with, so there was a lot of communication to get to where we are.
This isn't the first meeting Mrs. Comopin, Comopin at all, we've talked about it before. And I'm just mulling over what was just read regarding...
She didn't really address whether or not at least the definition of land use.
Well, if it did, then I guess we would have less, the lots would be smaller in size, but we met, we meet the Shoreland regulation of the lots, but I think that's the...
Which is dodging that this is maybe not a cluster, is that what you're saying?
It's only that it's connected to a cluster that, that the lots conform to the Shoreland District.
But you are asking for a variance on the road frontage of one of them, which is only ranked in a cluster.
Yes, and the solution to, well, I guess we're not, because we're still saying that we're out of the, we're in the, we're not in the Shoreland District. Because it does say in the Shoreland District, ask for 250 feet.
Well, the lots is in the district, so that's, that's where you're finding your interpretation.
But you can still say Gavin, that the lot's not in the Shoreland. Just as much as you could say it's in the Shoreland.
Well, if part of the lot is in the Shoreland, then it's in the Shoreland. I mean, just like it's in the road, it could be completely within the Shoreland, and it's still in the road district too, and that's just how lots are.
Do we have a way to define that, like percentage?
But say, you can't, you know, this isn't common sense, you can't do this in, in, in a Shoreland...
Yes, it is, it's to protect lake quality.
But we allow places to be built all the time in the Shoreland.
No, they don't permit planned unit developments or cluster developments in the Shoreland Zone. The zoning ordinance does not permit that.
But if I want to build a house up there, I could do it, there's nothing you can do about it.
Well, if you want to build a planned unit development or a cluster development, we would say, no, you couldn't do that Dennis, you could build one house, go ahead. But no, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about one person...
It's the same thing Gavin.
No, it's not the same thing as the one defined by the zoning ordinance. A single residential structure and a planned unit development or a cluster development are definitely separate things.
I understand the definition is separate, but the end results are same, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm not concerned about the end result, I'm talking about, we need to follow the zoning ordinance, there's no way we can change this. You can't talk your way out of the land use charter.
Um, no, but we can give variances, and there, and you do have to look at the long-term picture. Long-term is...
Well, let's wait for them to have a plan for that before we speculate as to what it would be, because that's not, I'm not here to speculate, I'm here to go with the physical papers that we have, the documents they're providing that show their plans for the development, the documents we have from Southern Maine and the zoning ordinance, and that's all I'm looking at. This is where we're at.
I think we can get a response from Southern Maine from...
From their response?
Yeah, I would expect they did.
Because it feels like we're kind of not lawyers.
No, but what I'm saying is, let's look at the whole picture. Brad, we're going to need to know if you get responses to this, or Leah gets response. Because I would rather much have, I would much more rather have the authority to have some kind of control over what goes in on the water front than no control. You can come in here and get three conditional use permits, and build three houses.
You wouldn't need a conditional use.
And you wouldn't, no, you wouldn't need it, would you?
He wouldn't need anything, three building permits.
He, you come in and get a building permit, three, and we're out of it, okay? We're out of it.
That's, that's the ordinance, that's why.
Okay, that's the ordinance.
Yeah.
I'd rather work together and I'd much rather...
No, it's the ordinance.
I'd much rather work together and have some...
My dear, hold the ordinance.
Control over what's going in, how it's going in, what the, the... Well, that's your opinion, but mine, and mine is, and I believe, this is our bible, this is our book.
This isn't my opinion, this is what the zoning ordinance said.
I just said that, I just said that, okay? But now let's get to the real world, and we make all kinds of conditions, we make all kinds of requests all the time, all these things, and you know that.
I'm sure you say a bible doesn't make sense.
Sometimes a bible doesn't make sense. I mean, where do you split the baby in half?
That doesn't, that doesn't make a difference to me, it makes sense and all, it is what it is. You have to go to town meetings to change this, we're not going to do that.
I think, I think that this probably subject has been covered. Any other points of view?
Well, I just want to see, because in terms of, like, so if it was traditional or, yeah, conventional lots here on the, on the water, you know, what the cluster brings to this is it brings access to all of these lots to the water, so there would be less...
How, I say that again, I'm not sure I agree with that.
So because this is a cluster subdivision?
Yeah.
That you have this area behind, yeah, behind Lot 12 there, where you have the whole subdivision has access to the water. If these were three conventional lots, you'd have...
If they were three conventional lots, you'd be trespassing. Okay, but you're also, you know...
But you'd have access to the other 14.
If they were conventional, then it's...
It's still open, so you just...
I still got, I still got plenty of room to learn.
But that open space would be part of the, sort of the cluster subdivision.
That was the buildup.
That's the buildup.
Well, I think one thing we could do is have Southern Maine come in and we listen, discuss it. If we can't come to a conclusion, I think we, we want to ask, invite Southern Maine to the meeting could be a good idea. I think just hopefully they can respond to Brad's letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, this is submitted July 1st, it's only been a month.
As long as it knows they take the response from you.
I would say, yeah, within 30 days, we should get a response.
So...
And I think they would send that to you, Ken, is that right?
Yeah.
They were really good on the first round.
Yeah, they were, no, they were also...
I mean, he has laid out very clearly, I know everything's in progress, but even at a sidewalk today, very clearly what his intentions are, how he's going to address certain issues, and what his plan for development is at what rate. And, I mean, it is erosion control, the power, the trees he's going to plant, the... I, I've never seen anybody as straightforward and clear on what they intend to do. And, and I appreciate Gavin, you, your opinion of it. But we change zoning ordinances almost every year because they don't work for everything that we want to do. That's why we adjust them every year, and every year we modify some.
It's a conversation for a board, so, yes.
I mean, I've had, I've had a lot of concerns about the lake and the development around the water. And after today, walking the site and talking to Ari, I feel a whole lot more comfortable with what I'm seeing. And I think we should retain some sort of, say, in, let's move right there. On the water. Yeah. And not, you know, not being sticklers for certain things that aren't necessarily the most important thing.
I mean, I've seen what he's done already to improve, in the Shoreland District, what to prevent any pollution, any improvements. I know what that was like up there, all right? I can see the improvements that have been made already. And, everybody knows preventing maintenance is the cheapest maintenance. And myself personally, I'm, I'm not voting anyway, but I'm satisfied with the plan. This is presented at this time, and continue moving forward.
I'm, I'm going to dare to stick my head out and hopefully make this the last thing. With, with the change in this configuration, and I'm looking at this, Brad, you have one in front of you, aren't you? That, that string grid that, that sort of guys up, is that, it's running alongside of it?
Um, gravel path, right?
Well, I don't know if that's the gravel path, or if it's the string...
Yeah, that is a gravel path, yeah.
Well, it's proposed, so that's, that's not...
Right before 1200 mile gravel path, to the left of that.
To the left of that, okay.
Yeah, then the left was below.
Below that, and those are the ones you're going to add those notes? To the who and how?
Yes.
They were, that we had talked about the first time, okay? I think that what we...
It's pretty far away, it's pretty far, isn't it?
It is. When you go and you actually see the property, we can see whole, whole...
Big difference.
Whole different, seeing it in person. I know if you saw that, the pond that's really tucked into the woods when you're just about, what, quarter of the way down the hill, not even a quarter of the way down the hill.
It's probably almost a quarter of an hour from here, from the lake. And I had that staked out a few weeks ago.
That was staked out, and that's really tucked back in. So when you see it, it's quite, quite a different thing. I think what we'd like to do then is, is take, the housekeeping is taken care of on all of these. And again, you know, we're all going to be wallpapering our homes with these things at some point. As we get closer to the end, we're going to need that, your stamp on it too, okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we need your, I think you did that on some of the very first ones of these, okay? We're going to need the, your stamp on it. But get those notes in there, and if you have to browse somebody's page to get your responses from Southern Maine, do that. And soon, soon as we get that, their responses, we can pick this up and move forward.
Okay. Like I say, I have a call in Abby, so I'll get a call back from her, she wrote today, so...
Yeah.
So that's, I'll, I'll call for it.
Okay, that would be great.
Do you want to vote, we accept the application, we haven't done that?
We haven't done that.
That was the sketch plan, that was the sketch, now we've been presented with another sketch plan. So we can, it's a different plan than the original one.
But the application is complete as it stands. So...
Make a motion, we accept the submitted application?
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to accept, on a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm not sure we should be accepting them without Southern Maine's, contacting Southern Maine and getting their response, for I feel like we could be jumping the gun, honestly.
Well, they have, they've checked out all the boxes, what they need for the application.
We're not proofing, we're checking.
Just that you have, that you've checked the boxes for the requirements for the application.
All right?
No, I don't necessarily agree with it.
No, I'm just trying to make it clear that what we're doing...
Is accepting the application. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Accepting the application? I didn't see it on this side. Okay? Four opposed, all of sayings?
All abstain.
Four, zero, one.
What's the reason for abstaining then?
Yeah, you have to state a reason for abstaining.
I'd just like to see, we, we had the first application, brought it in, we got the comments from Southern Maine. I did a comparison between the two of them, I'm still not satisfied with what I see. I'd like to get Southern Maine's input, get the board's input, so I feel like I'd like more information before I...
So you'd like more information from Southern Maine?
But that's not on the application, that's on the plan.
Well, that's a reason, isn't it?
That's a reason to vote no, not abstain.
If I didn't, I wouldn't vote against it, I'm not against it, I'm just stating that I'd, I'd like to get more input on this thing from Southern Maine before we barrel ahead, that's all. And I'm not, I'm not voting nothing, I can abstain for, for any reason I want. That's a reason. I mean, I, I don't feel like voting, and that's a reason, I mean.
I'm just making sure you're not related to the order.
But Southern Maine has to get back to us, we're satisfied, the lawyer charged herself three, four meetings ago.
We'll, we'll touch base with Southern Maine, you guys will probably be on show tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then you're on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll move forward. If I need to, I can touch base with our adjutant attorney too, to see if there's anything, Brad, they have...
I have some question about the planned unit development, but is it important that I dodge it?
I don't think we need to pay the attorney to do it. If we look at the definition of a planned unit development, it meets the definition.
Because it's the answer you wanted.
No, because I joined with the definition of a planned unit development, I have it right here.
We're all set on that, we really are.
I mean, it's, it's a planned, it's a planned unit development, you know, and here's the definition. Um, I think we're all clear on that.
That every subdivision's a planned unit development?
No, it doesn't say subdivision, because a subdivision can be just one person breaking up one lot within a five-year period at the same time they broke up. We didn't, no, no. A planned unit development is different than a subdivision. What would you like people to do with those lots? I'd like to enroll them into the open space, so that people in the division, in the, well, I mean, that's just... All the other lots, those are going to be built on, trust me. Well, that's fine, I'm just upholding the ordinance, we don't need to discuss it further tonight. I have stated my opinion. But it's just, I got to uphold the ordinance, that's, that's why I'm on the planning board. So, we'll see you next week.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
One thing did raise the conversation, it was totally different being on the site, wasn't it?
Well, thanks for having those carts.
Oh, yeah, I explained everything, I explained that.
No, the carts. It was just kind of too bad that on the way back, that some of those, we didn't lose a couple passengers.
We ate the dust. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a heads up, I should be on the site. She wants to come out, I'd be glad to hear that.
What's she, she just went out of hospital.
Takes a while.
If she wants to come out anytime, I can run around, at least show her the concept, but we need to go in. If she'd like, oh, what about that one? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for these. And I forgot, we got the housekeeping issues?
Yes, well, the rest of those.
Those taken care of. That was really, that's not what you wanna trip on. That's nothing you wanna trip on. I appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You want it? No plan. Try to warm it up. You don't want any trouble here tonight.
He's the guy that kept us waiting on our last. Joe, you remember?
Stories, a lot of these guys, they didn't get the seatbelt. Sorry.
Joe, you do remember that he was the guy that kept us waiting at the site lock?
Thanks for winding Gavin up, you guys.
And you're nearly up for us again tonight. So I think he's only there perpetuating.
Oh, that's awesome.
We just kind of sketch plan, open them, you know, get a couple ideas, a couple concepts up in front of you and so we can talk in a direction everybody wants to have, say locks and all these different things.
So what are you doing? What do you wanna do?
I just, I was.
I'm gonna grab that.
Uh huh.
In the middle of the lake?
Was it island on the lake?
What happens on the lake, do you wanna do it on?
Actually, applying it for doing the lock, that was in the last application.
Give me, give me a point of reference.
13th Street, right?
Quarter of West Shore Drive.
That will be in a minute. So.
Are we doing two of these today?
Yeah, we both kind of had a conceptual phase. There's a couple, you know, I met with Ken on Monday, kind of detailed the view of things, trying to get it, get that prepared, you know, to be completely thorough submissions. But we didn't think at this point it was worth coming in and start, start the discussions, get some questions together and. And so basically, Ken, I guess Ken's trying to pull it up for us, but Billy's lot on the left-hand side of West Shore Drive, just, just as you turn off the Bus Point Road, he's got.
Is that Ruby, what's her name's house?
After that, and after the, after the new house that's on the, on the left.
Right.
From there, I don't, that whole stretch of land all the way.
All the way up to?
The next house.
Yeah.
About seventeen, eighteen hundred feet on the road.
So that ties into.
It's leftover land from my southern division.
Ties into the Christmas tree lots next door.
Just before, yeah, this whole Christmas freezer, yeah.
Yeah, all the Christmas.
Peppins lawn.
Peppins lawn, yeah. So that's leftover by that culvert, right?
Uh, it's before the culvert. Wait, wait for the culvert.
Which turns out it could be a big issue.
You know what I was thinking?
Oh, I know. That, I mean.
Trust me, I was thinking it.
I'd like to take that hill down. I'd like to take that hill down at the culvert.
No, Rob, just keep him outside.
No, you don't, you don't want to do that. I mean, that, number one, the culvert probably couldn't take, you're trapped.
That's right.
The, the, oh, well, what's not?
It does.
Well, that, hey, hey, hey.
So that's the new house built right there.
Yeah.
This would be the proposed law right here. So in a nutshell, the lot is about forty-eight acres in size. On the westerly side of it, there is, there is a stream down there that's partly on and partly off the property called Style Brook. Basically, we've mapped the weapons, the weapons associated with the brook and, you know, per your ordinance, there's a 250 foot, these sort of protection setbacks from those. And then we've also, you know, this kind of just conceptual plan to get things started. And then we showed the required 100 foot buffers along the road and neighboring property lines, which, you know, we honor all of the constraints as far as the resources go and the setbacks to the property lines. There's about nineteen acres of the land left that's open to the possibility of.
So you go from forty-eight to nineteen?
Don't you not complain of losses?
Still paying taxes on that?
Yeah, I know. Painful.
So at this point in time, again, we kind of wanted to get the discussion started. Billy is proposing an entrance to the site right where, apparently already is an existing road that was built and remodeling was done a few years back in the lower, lower left-hand corner, as you face in that way. It's the southeast of the corner if north is up.
That's what I had.
Oh, we still have that?
Yeah.
The radiation.
Radiation law.
Okay, so, you know, basically, because there's already existing access in this area, that's, we're proposing at this point in time, and then we're also proposing building a berm to, you know, provide a buffer for that nearest residential home. At this, at this point in time, we've got most of everything put together. We have the engineers at Sabino Technics providing us with the grading plan and detailed, you know, erosion control sheets and accident sheets and things like that, if anything did happen. So we basically, that's the one kind of big piece of the puzzle we don't have to present to you yet. Again, this is kind of more of a sketch plan type meeting, but that grading plan is well underway and that should be here soon and provided with their additional notes. And I also went through your plan, your minutes from the discussions you had with Richard Weitz at Leboeau High Home, and it was mineral extraction, and I kind of took a lot of the notes and things that you guys wanted to see on that and have incorporated that into this initial plan here to cover, you know, at least some of those bases right out of the gate here. At this point in time, that's what we're proposing. So we're proposing in touch, none of the dark green area is shown on the plan, and then we've got Sabino Tech working on a, a grading plan for.
That's pretty flat, that whole area, as compared to when you go down on the other side of Peppins and on the other side of Oak Ridge where it starts really climbing.
Right, there's some pretty big knobs beside the road over there, yeah.
Yeah, as you walk, as you walk in the woods, there's a few rolling hills that you can only go uphill.
Right, I mean, it will go, well, you go further down, it'll take you right up to A-Track.
Yes.
But that part is all pretty flat where this is.
Up towards the road.
Coming up towards the road. If you go from the road, you're going fairly flat in. And that buffer's there because, I mean, you know.
Yeah, you want, you shouldn't really get to see us from the road. That's I won't.
I see that buffer. Is that the only, is there any, is that where the resource protection stops? Is where that line is?
On the backside, yes.
The, the red dotted line up there is the edge of the resource protections.
That's a hundred fifty feet.
We had Ken Gardner of JR Peso's map the edge of the weapons and then we located it with survey instruments rather than GPS, so we have a very exact location. Yep.
But that's, that doesn't, does that coincide with the maps that we have?
Uh, Ken, yeah, pretty similarly, you know, our, our information's more detailed. You can see the brown layer on these maps. That's what's represented on our plan. Our plan is actually slightly more restrictive than the depiction here based on actual ground truthing of the features on the ground. These, these maps are kind of general maps done.
Basically, coming out of this point here to that point there with a, sort of a pace.
So Kenny Godden.
Picked up from there and.
Give us a thing.
My name's not on the issue report.
Yeah.
Uh, it was just imposed on from the plan.
So Kenny hang, Kenny goes along the, the weapons and he takes his probe and he goes kind of up and down the bank and see where that wet, wet lands and the vegetation stops. And then he hangs a series of flags. So he doesn't provide a map. He hangs on those flags and then they go back through the survey instrument that we did and located every one of the flags that he hung on the edge of the weapon and then we offset that distance that required to, to come up with that.
I guess what my, my thing is that I, I just don't understand. We have Kenny Godden going and he's, is the expert and says, this is wetland, blah, 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 blah. You know, this is where your resource protection used to be. So then you, then you serve it at your, and you put it onto this plan.
Yep.
The problem that I guess is where I don't understand is the town adopted these maps. They said this is all resource protection with Goddard, so what section we're talking about. To change the usage of what is actually, should be resource protection, which is by the dawn, much of dawn, to make it right. Don't we still have to go by our pants?
Um, on, on past projects, Dennis anyways, the, this town or most towns have always looked at this as a general mapping. Without having had detailed studies on each site, this is the best, best way we know to depict these features. But it's always been my job to confirm the accuracy of that. We know on the general mapping, there's something there somewhere, and then it's our, my job and Ken Gardner's job to go out and say, okay, it is here, it's exactly here. And I do believe there's some language in the ordinance there somewhere towards the beginning that allows for us, you know, we're not changing the map in any way. We're, we're taking that general line and putting it on the face of the earth. I mean, there's some, for an example, there's some areas that on the flat ground even, like, I forget the woman's name that put the little, what do they call them, the big trailers?
Big storage.
Storage container.
Karen.
Yeah, Karen. Her lot is shown as being entirely in the flood zone on the maps, the general maps. There were some of these guests, when I went out there with my survey instrument, measured the flood zone elevation and everything, we realized a good half of our land is in the flood zone. And I guess that's just an example of where our detailed mapping, you know, the maps let us know and look for this resource, but then our detailed mapping confirms, and it, you know, it works both ways. In this instance, even some of this area down here, I think, if you wanna look at it that way, Billy would be losing. But to me, it's just we're exposing the truth. I think, I think the, what we have located is the intent of that map. We just know where it is a little better than made it to Southern Maine.
No, I appreciate, I just didn't understand the, because as we know, it was like a blanket with a lot of property in town. And there was no research done to show that it needed to be, and we just put it through. And I didn't, but other people did, and then you got a deal with what should be on the map where it's actually.
To be, to be fair, Dennis, people put a lot of time. I would just say, to be fair, Dennis, people put a lot of time into defining the resource protection districts of the town. Ken, Ken paused right two to three years going and looking at the small wetlands and, well.
I'm telling you.
Yes, I did.
I'm telling you.
And they're doing exactly what we would ask them to do, just verifying on their own lot. If there's any sort of discrepancy, we just get someone on the ground and we go with a person on the ground because they're the experts, so.
Like I said, if a lot of good dry land in town was put in resource protection, it never should have been.
What's the twenty acres of it right now?
The, all right, enough. In, in your mapping, it's more restricted than our mapping.
I believe so, in this instance.
Times it right in this area seems to be, yeah. Do you know what your pit floor elevation?
Yeah, two thirty-five, Ken, for at the bottom in the writing.
Yeah, what about, so obviously this is in touch, so it's uphill. Once your pit's done, it's gonna be uphill to the resource protection.
Right, everything will be self-contained.
I'm gonna say, thanks for making a bowl.
Yeah, internally drained.
What are you gonna do after?
I'd like to make a field.
Trees? I know, a field.
A field with no trees. That's why we call it a field.
So Billy's going this way.
Yeah, I don't plan on selling the land, so.
So we can bring some wild farm seeds in the field and make it a man.
I'd rather see a B.A. field. It's all else with that.
And it, and it's just, I say personal use, personal use. It's just, you, you're not running an operation.
No, it's strictly for our company, not for the public.
Something to the lights.
This isn't, this isn't a gravel pit that trucks, other than our own being of.
You're gonna get us a small design we can look at it on next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Until we talk to Craig a lot, he's, he's still touching up. He had some questions. And just, so we will bring some of that as recently as today, but yes, we do have a, a more finished grading plan that will be on the way shortly. I just thought.
We had enough to start discussing.
Right, so you're gonna bring it up next time?
Yes, we just want to try to get the ball rolling and make sure that we're giving you guys what you'd like to see and try to cut down the Q B's possible.
How busy, how many trips, daily trips are you taking?
There'd be weeks where we wouldn't even be there, and then there could be weeks where there every day. That's what it. Excuse me?
Holmes Hertz.
Yes, yeah. For our own use, so if we need material, we go get it, and if we don't need it, we wouldn't be in there.
Yeah, you know, one of the things, living in the neighborhood, people are always with the old pits that go, you know, all the way down the road. Oh, can we go shooting in there? What, find a place to go shoot? And that really bothers me.
Yeah, I remember there's one people in there shooting.
Yeah, so you put a gate on.
Uh, I would, absolutely would have a gate there.
Yeah.
I want a paved entrance with a gate.
Yeah, and posted?
So.
Posted, posted?
Uh, you mean just put posted signs up? Yeah, absolutely. I don't want anybody in there. We don't want, it's not a free, it's not a place for people to go hang out. I don't want anybody in there.
But the idea of going in there shooting, especially with that newer house.
Yes.
Right next door, I mean.
Yeah, no, I don't want, I don't want anybody in there shooting.
Right, and there are a couple of ATV trails not far from that area.
There's an ATV trail that kind of goes through there.
Yeah, from the other side of the road.
Yeah, and I would, just 'cause I'm, I don't have a problem with it, I would try to accommodate them.
But as unapproved ATV trail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna give us a rundown of your other projects?
Uh, yeah, I just, I mean, I guess at this point, I mean, we'll, we'll get you that grading plan. I'd be surprised if we didn't have it for the next meeting and just, I mean, I don't know. At what point in the process you guys wanna go for a walk and take a look at all this, right? Basically, I just wanna introduce it, see people's initial feel, if there's anything specific that you wanna see for next time, I'm definitely happy to try to pull that together.
How many trucks a day could you imagine worst-case scenario you've been in?
How many trips?
Yeah.
Um, the worst-case scenario? Twenty-five, thirty?
That's what I was guessing.
On, on a, you know, if I had all five trucks hauling one day.
And your job site was just up the street.
Right. Yep.
So what, you know, again, this is all very preliminary stuff, but what Billy has proposed, talking to me, was to pave the first hundred, hundred twenty-five feet of the entrance just to reduce, you know, dust.
I don't wanna make dust and I wanna eat clean and.
And then after we get back into the light green area there on the plan, then it would probably be more conventional.
You know, if, if it was, you know, the busiest time you were gonna be and you had your five trucks running in there each doing two or three trips a day, or Joe, you're very familiar with West Shore.
Yep.
And the road is an okay road. I'm gonna grade it okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but that end, will you turn in off of West, off of, uh?
Yes, off I'm gone. I just saw they patched the part that was there.
Uh, yeah, they, they were patched. That was called patched probably done about two or three, as soon as I could do it.
Yeah.
And it's coming apart already. I mean, that is, um.
Yeah, Rudy's not even running this bit right now. He's shut right out for the summer.
No, um, he's in Alaska or something. Um, it, it, it's not, but he never had that many trucks going in and out in the last ten years.
It was sporadic with the two.
Right, in the last ten years.
He sells to the public, he sends a handful of guides and blind material from them and.
You know, and, and I think it was all coming out of the other pit anyway, not, not West Shore. But that road, we'll take a beating at that end, so, um, you know, just, just something to be mindful of.
We want it smooth and neat for our own trucks too, so.
Definitely.
We don't mind if we see a pothole, we certainly would patch it.
The other thing is.
For our own sake.
Well, you know, some of them could be almost rented out for living space. They tend to get so big at the end of the winter.
Yeah.
But, um.
The potholes?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And that was my only concern was the entrance here, Goose Pond, West Shore Drive.
The biggest thing there, Ken, seriously, is people do not believe a lot, they don't believe in corners.
Exactly.
They, what I tell you.
But you don't have that too.
They kept close on that side.
They kept close on that side.
Yeah.
And you're always going to see, you know, you're going to hear people talking about how horrible tires are today. You cannot buy a decent tire. Come down to that intersection right there and all the rubber from their tires is all on the road.
Yeah.
That's, you know, they go burning.
That was one of the early comments with Joe when we first met was possibly a white stripe under twenty feet right off of there. Just because there's people come from one oh nine, they hug that so.
Oh, yeah.
That's going to be.
You said a white stripe, Ken?
Yeah.
In the middle, you mean?
Yeah.
Try and just hit a yellow something.
Separate the way.
Just so they have to go around the, the lane coming out of there and it would force them or they'd.
Isn't that something the town would have to do then?
Uh, we could request the developer to work with the town, pay for it, do, you know, something like that. We'd have to check with the road commission, make sure he's okay with that.
That would be, uh, Will.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
I definitely seen what you're talking about, dude. People just kind of, they hug, they hug the inside of that turn going up.
Just like these, this map shows, it just comes right in there. They don't come out to the ninety degree.
Right, and the other thing is, is nobody ever stops at the stop sign because the stop sign is probably fifteen feet. I mean, if you stop at that stop sign and look and say, I can go, I promise you, you're going to be dead in two days.
Yeah, you have to really creep, creep up to it.
Because you got to creep up to the edge. So that is a bad, just, just something to have in the back of your head.
This, uh, truck, truck signs down there. Truck signs.
I don't know.
They used to, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
There's nothing now. I, I know years ago they used to have the, you know.
Trucks entering signs, yeah.
Yeah, but not, not for, it was ten years.
That's condition, sign condition.
Yeah, but, um, just something for you to think about because I, I know you don't want to be picking out a little tree or something here.
No.
Trucks.
No, bro.
You have a grill of one of your trucks.
Underneath it.
Go underneath it, exactly, you know.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, we'll look at it soon. We could come up with maybe even talk to the road commissioner before we get to part of this process to see.
Is there anything jumping out, anything jumping out to you guys that you don't like or would like to see so we can have it ready for you?
I'd like to see a regrading plan with that elevations. I'm interested in the, uh, the final elevation for the pit as compared to the adjacent wetland elevation and things like that.
Adjacent wetland is two thirty and the full pit would ask for a two thirty-five.
Yeah.
That will be on the grading plan.
Yeah.
It's actually on this plan right here.
Right.
Yeah, that's, we discussed that stuff with the engineer.
Right, of course you do. That's curiosity.
Okay, that's all, sorry, that's good. You gotta go sign out there, you know, your own sign.
I'd like to. Well, I don't, you know, I really don't care about it because I'm not trying to sell it to the public, so I don't, nobody needs to pay on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Truck entering sign.
I would be all right with that, I don't want to have a.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want the public, they don't want.
They want them to stop there looking for you.
No, the worst thing is is I, you know, always asking me if I'll sell them to gravel. I, I'm not, we're not in the gravel business.
Yeah.
It's for our own jobs.
You're not retail.
No, exactly. All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Thanks for coming. Alright, thank you, Will.
Good job with the pointer. You didn't, you didn't get anybody.
I know, I'm going to get Ken in the eye when he, he said right there, that's all I need. Come on. He's asking me to.
Give a little hair to my hair.
Alright. I don't know how I ended up being in the business of representing all these gravel jobs. Here we are. So then this is the other one. Yeah, this is the other one that we had talked about, um, when we were at Sun Towns. This is the work, uh, kind of the permitting and the end goal here, um, for the, uh, for the work that's, that's been started over the years at the fairgrounds. Basically, this is the same engineer, um, that's the major techniques that he had, you know, Billies, uh, so you're getting a similar grading plan, grading plan for his. In, in this instance, um, basically we've gone out, um, and we've surveyed the property lines, come up with all the existing contours. There's been some, a little bit of, uh, mineral extraction that's appeared, that's been done there over the years. We've kind of mapped all that out and then, uh, we test Craig with grading the site in the best possible fashion so that someday we could create, um, a, a field area which would primarily be used for parking, uh, for the fairgrounds. So what, what, where we're going with it is we're hoping that we can create, you know, it's only a couple of times a year we need to be used, so we're hoping to kind of keep it grass rather than gravel or pavement, kind of like they do with their other parking on the other side of the fairgrounds. But the, the end goal would be to create, create a flat area there that people could park in and we'd start to hopefully put up signage or whatnot to discourage all the parking that currently goes along, goes on along, along the line here. And it would kind of, I'm still, after my discussions with Ken, I was hoping at it tonight and I didn't get it quite done, I was trying to put together conceptual, this is about how many cars we fit in here if the project went through so we could all be engaged for, um, and how much space this is going to try to provide, but, um.
How much space is this?
Uh, basically. Yeah, I think that the parent lot is, yeah, if I recall, I can't hear, the column is around fourteen acres too, yeah, and, uh, basically, uh, Craig's design leaves a buffer of trees along the roadside, um, and, um, it doesn't kind of touch this, this end closest to Route one oh nine. This whole section is kind of untouched in this, and then there's kind of a buffer, you can see this proposed tree line that's in here along this side, and then there's kind of a flat area for drainage to make sure we have no additional drainage leaving the site, um, before and after this project. And we're even treating some stuff coming off the property to the north with some, with some of these drainage structures you see coming down the hill here. We're kind of trying to channel it down into this flat area so it won't be some, some infiltration and slow everything down. There are, there are a couple small cross culverts in the road and, um, kind of the engineer decided rather than trying to resize those culverts and deal with anything on the other side of the road, that we just deal with any additional water in these, these two locations on that side of the road, so. End result, that's, uh, that's what we're shooting for is, um, you know, talking to the fairgrounds and talking to Caleb, I think this is kind of a long-term pick out of project. It might be ten or fifteen years before they're actually trying to park cars and stuff over there, but at least now's the time to get all the permits in place, ask all the questions and then, you know, basically over the years, Caleb's, um, hauled a little bit of material off of this site and part of it could be, uh, he can continue that process of trying to start flapping on this out, but at least now he has some guidance as to, you know, what final grades and what drainage needs to look like, um, at the end of this.
How much material are we talking about yet to remove?
I'm, I'm not a dirt guy that would be able to tell you that. You can see the proposed, existing and proposed contours, um, I think, um, up in this area over here, we are only talking a foot or two difference, but then over down in this area, it's more, there's kind of a hill here, this is more like ten feet.
Yeah.
To get it down flat.
But it has been worked on in the past.
This, this whole.
From Google Maps, it looks like it.
Yeah.
It had worked on.
This, so most of the trees have been cut over the years and then kind of this whole circle that I'm doing over here has been, has been worked on.
Right, that's the more open area.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's more than ten acres.
Yeah, what's open right now on the deep pitch? Yeah, it's already open.
Has it been dropped out, stumps removed on the, on the majority of the, you know, when you get that Google Earth map up, you can see how it's paler there. Has that been dropped out?
I believe a lot of it has. They cut these trees.
So that's a pretty big acreage to be dropped out. Did you get, do you need permitting for that?
I, this is, this is the first that I've been involved with any sort of permitting. So it's all that's happened until before I was.
Right, right, gotcha.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea, Joe, uh, how many yards that they've been hauling out of there?
I don't, but I can find out. What's that?
It seems to me that quite a bit has been taken out in the last year.
I, that definitely wouldn't shock me. I know, um, so this, you know, much as I hate to rain up, there's, there's kind of these two things that, I mean, they've been picking at this, I think, for at least five or six years, if I'm not mistaken. Kind of, the rules have changed since they started and now we're playing catch-up a little. It's, it's similar to the thing that, you know, on the other side of the pit and, um, so, you know, Ken, Ken asked me so they could catch up with their permitting. He asked me to try to get something like this, I mean, almost a good, probably a year ago, but we're just now finally getting to all the grading plans and everything, meeting where we've talked.
I mean, I wouldn't be surprised in the last year that they've just looking at it, that they might even exceed the ten thousand yet.
And they may have, I mean.
I don't know that, but.
I, I, all I can do is ask, um, and I do think they've kept track of it because, you know, I think that, I think the fairgrounds is being compensated by Mr. Chessy, um, for what's coming out, so I think they have a pretty good idea of what's come out, if it, if it is something that I need to look up to.
Do they sell?
No, Caleb's been, you know, he's kind of involved with Mr. Ridley and some of the people at the fairgrounds and he's, uh, he's, he's been kind of doing on a small scale what Billy, Billy's doing, taking it first projects around town.
Is owned by the agricultural subsidy?
Correct.
Are you their signed representative?
Yes.
We have that paperwork, you filled it out.
I believe I did submit it, I may have a copy over here. But yes, Roger, Roger Ridley did sign that for me on behalf of the, uh, yeah, here's a copy of it.
Okay, you anticipate when you announce coming to these meetings or?
Um, at, when it's time, I would probably have Mr. Ridley and Mr. Chessy come into a meeting or two, uh, to answer questions on behalf of the fairgrounds or on behalf of, you know, even, even earthwork and stuff, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, I know a ton about doing subdivisions and doing camp expansions and things like that, but I still, uh, I still often defer to, uh, people like Billy and Caleb when you get specific questions regarding gravel gravel, that's not my area of expertise, so. At some point when we get to those detailed questions, I would probably have him come in.
Have you done about free parking to give people one oh nine?
I, Ken and I were having that discussion. I don't, I don't, I'd be surprised if it was free, but it sure would be nice.
I'd be very surprised.
I would, I mean, they charge one the other side.
Right, you know, I'm not sure how that works with that. Well, I mean, that's part of what Ken and I discussed to you Monday. If, you know, as this proceeds and as we, discussions with you, um, you know, I think one of the things we will do is approach DOT and, you know, discuss signage on one side, both sides, you know, at least discourage some of that because, you know, I'm, I'm the, I hate signs. I hate putting restrictions on people, but in this instance, having dealt with crossing that street in the dark with my family at nine or ten o'clock, it might be nice if something works out with this, so most of the people could be crossing Thirteenth Street, you know, Ken, again, Ken and I had been discussing, put maybe some sort of seasonal temporary crosswalk with a light or something so they could cross at a, maybe a different ticket gate on this side to, to be able to access the fairgrounds and keep people away from one oh nine altogether.
All together.
So that's, um, that's kind of what we're here to, to discuss and, um, give you guys a chance.
But you, I mean, no, no idea how many cars would there?
No, I tried to have that answer ready for tonight per Ken's recommendations and it was more challenging than I thought it was going to be in designing that whole lot. So I didn't quite, well, I have all the specs, I have just flow of traffic because it's kind of long and narrow. We are trying to leave.
Yeah.
This buffer on this side, so I'm trying to find a good way to, you know, line people in and out of here kind of, you know, safely and efficiently, um, so I, I did make it, you know, right now, our permit is more asking about the earth removal and getting to the, to the park where they can park in it as a field like they do across the way, but we do have these drainage structures we need to deal with and, you know, Ken was correct, it would be very helpful if I could tell you guys we have a potential fifty cars or two hundred cars or whatever it is so we could compare, you know, prepare appropriately. So I'm still working on that part, but I will have a better handle on the proposed layout of what the fairgrounds could do.
And it's all hypothetical until we know how much extraction is going to take place.
Yeah.
So really it's extraction we're looking at.
Well, that's phase one.
Phase one, yeah.
But yet the end goal is parking.
The end goal is parking.
Uh, in a field.
In a field.
So we had talked Monday, paved entrances, Joe mentioned the parking of one oh nine. He's working on his parking plan, um, this entrance would have streetlights, crosswalks, things like that.
Right.
We talked about the possibility of maybe like an emergency, like trying to keep the public knowing this way, there may be some sort of emergency exit down on this end. We'd like to limit, you know, everybody from traveling that stretch of Thirteenth Street, but if somebody, if the fairgrounds were getting out, parking lot was a little jammed up, some way for someone to slip out in the back of through them. I don't know how we would, you know, gate or something.
Yeah, that was, I thought originally was this would be a gated entrance for the fire department, if it was all jammed up, you could get the ambulance in or something, you know, they'd be dressed from the back. I think the big thing is for you guys to make contact with Thirteenth Street Association, whoever's John out there, make sure they're on board with your, your changes proposed.
I think Thirteenth Street has their own website, their contact information.
Yep. Outside looking in, I've seen, I've seen some of those discussions. No, I think it's a great idea, um, and that's one of the first things Caleb's, Caleb brought it to, uh, he, he's, he does a lot of the earthwork on behalf of the fairgrounds and the whole piece and he was, he wants to make sure he can, he can feed everybody.
Thirteenth Street will be happy.
Fairgrounds and that association have to get along, they're both, both kind of.
Yeah, because they allow a lot of traffic too, you know, twice a year.
Right.
So they're wholesome.
Yeah, I decided, and you heard my comment, we got enough funds here already.
And this could be, I mean, if they only get dug back to here and they start using
And this could be, I mean, if they only get dug back to here and they start using it, it could be utilized for parking before it gets done. But they've even started as they're digging, they're reclaiming as they're going back through, so.
They are doing that.
No.
Isn't what they're gonna do when it's all done and over with the road?
That would be conditionally, well, the parking.
Yes, I mean, whether they use parking or whether they.
Well, the parking lot. No, well, the parking lot's gonna encourage possibly hundreds of people to be crossing here. So it would be something for the planning board to make sure it's safe. And anything's gonna be safe without parking on the opposite side of Route 109.
How much pushback do you think people get with Thirteenth Street? Because that is a part of the.
Thirteenth.
Thirteen or maybe.
Yeah.
All depends how they get along with the fairgrounds people in the past. If they've got a good working relationship, I could see it not being that big of a deal with a crosswalk that was manned by somebody to allow so it doesn't disrupt. And as we talked, we were talking cars coming in, cars going out of this other one, so you're not crisscrossing going in. So the cars coming out of this other one wouldn't be, uh, the cars going in here wouldn't be crossing that. So if you came in this one and out that one, the flow would be better.
And we're still, you're still talking about a huge volume of traffic that is gonna.
Look, we're waiting on the parking plan to answer that question.
Right.
It's long and skinny and if you have a road down and a road back, you just lost half your parking, I think, so.
That'd be a pain for us, though.
Yeah, at least for some distance, you know, a couple cars queuing up there anyways.
They're probably grubbing.
That's it.
Far too.
It's just, we're trying to make a flat surface and grass first.
Better than the paved entrance now.
No, no. No, but we'll see, we'll see what the association says.
I think you need to, you know, get us the elevations, but I think you need to start talking to the association.
Well, absolutely, that's what we usually tell everyone. Talk to you about this, this is weed it out and then they don't come to the public ear. Because if they come to the public ear and that's the first they've heard, they're already accelerated.
Yeah. No, weed grain, that's, like you said, that was the first thing Caleb brought up. So I think everybody's on board with that. Kind of, we got now, we've got an actual engineered grading plan and drainage plan at those times that start especially with the law too.
No, I think against cars off 109, it's, it's a good thing, you know. I would hope it was sooner than ten or fifteen years from now.
Well, I mean, at the rate, you know, Caleb, you know, he's kind of the smaller hometown operation. The way he would handle it, it would, it would take a while to move that material. And if they wanted to invite somebody else in, that's something different. I think that's, I think the fairgrounds are very happy with how Caleb has treated them. And I think at this point, they're not looking to deal with another, or, at this point. Like I said, at some point, get a couple more meetings with you guys. We're on the same page on most of the application. I know that's Mr. Ridley and Caleb that come in. You can express those type of things with that one. I'm happy to go in there. You know, overall, we just, again, some of the earth moving that has been done over there, out there over the years, I think they've just kind of haphazardly done what they thought was best for the site. So I think they're welcoming an actual set of plans here to work off so they can match some grades, meet some grades, you know, where they can, can. So at this point, I'll, I'll come back with what I think we could get for parking spaces, maybe rough flow of traffic, plus all this stuff.
This is the elevation.
Couple of the other details that Ken and I have gone over. Is there anything you guys would like to see at this point? And kind of wait to, to see that next iteration?
I just wanted to make sure that Thirteenth Street's gonna be on board.
Yeah. No, we'll definitely have those, we'll definitely make contact with them and start the discussion.
Start to have those conversations.
I mean, it's, it's, we're, we'll, we'll figure it out. I mean, they both, both organizations have to work together. I mean, there's an association there, but the landowner's still on the road. So everybody's gotta, kind of, play along together to turn this sort of thing.
I mean, there's been always been, you know, some sort of grading process that it contributes so much to the whole association, you know, for the, you know.
Yeah. And definitely don't think so. Especially, you know, especially the section of the road between that and heading out. I'm sure there can be some discussions there around making sure that's kept in prime condition and that this doesn't affect it in a negative way and, and affect a brutal thing.
Sounds very good.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Goodbye.
I didn't market myself that way, it's just gonna happen. But happy to help as close to home at least as best I can.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Good night. We're on. And then it'll be official.
So are you wanting us to do that now, like together?
Yeah, we'll wait together because this house does have to go tomorrow. By tomorrow. Yeah. And so it's just to ask, if you use this, this will tell you.
I told you a page of.
On a page. And what was changed? And if you really notice about it, you can go into your red book and see where it was and now that it isn't. But Christina and I both did that, we're pretty sure it's very accurate. And, um, and I just thought in years past, the board hasn't early ratified it and wasn't in the unit to set up.
So what you're looking for, this is what we're making motion to?
Yeah.
Accept the amended zone order. Make a motion.
Not really accepting yet, we're just.
We're rather high than exactly.
Exactly.
Isn't that the same?
I just feel, I feel like in years past, after you made your amendments and it went to town hearing, it never came back to you and it's, it's your document. So this way, it kind of makes a full circle back to you.
No, we, we never got it back in this form. We had our blue pages or yellow pages showing pretty much this sort of thing.
And this is, this is what you're sending to the state to, to the. Well, at that point, I don't send the whole document to them. What I ended up, I do have, I got a copy of the warrant from upstairs to show what the vote was. And then I'm going to clean this up and take off the post and everything and send this to them because they actually want to see strikeouts. Because the email that I got from them, they want to see strikeouts. So I thought this document does it. And then if they really are, I'm not picky, but thorough. If they really are thorough, then they can, they can see if this corresponds to the warrant. And hopefully this should, this should be the last time Tim Mahler's thing is, it goes to the state of Maine, I hope.
So as you look at page one, it is, these things should not be there. And I just looked at them all or not?
Yay.
You went page by page.
I went page by page. Yeah, it's just so quick.
Because I'm fast.
They're all for medical, you can see where they should be.
And you just go to each page now, I just looked at the page number and went, yeah.
But that's. I tried to make it as easy as possible.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Christina helped me out a lot.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion already or no?
I thought we had one for now.
No, no.
No.
You can make a motion.
No, you can't, no, I figured on the.
That's what you said at one of the meetings.
No, I was an ultimate fire, and then we made a motion.
You said, you said, right, Dennis says, and you said, I can make a motion, I just can't hold on.
I'm making a motion that we were.
Well, Dennis.
Verifying that this is just accurate.
I'll second it.
Those were all the pages? Page thirteen through thirty-four. I have a motion and a second. Almost there.
Okay. I'll even cross check them.
Thank you.
Excellent.
See, that's why I finished before you did. Let me call for the vote, please. All in favor of ratifying that the corrections are correct?
Yay.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else on this month's reminder? There will be no Wednesday planning board meetings, workshops in August. They will start up again in September, being the second and fourth Wednesday each month at noon time, if you can be there, that is wonderful. If you cannot, it's understandable. No votes will ever be taken at a workshop. And what is discussed will be, um, brought back to the full board meetings the next week because there'll be just a week five workshop meetings.
And it's held at the Thomas Cash.
It's held at the Thomas A. Cash Meeting Room.
Keep meeting the fairgrounds.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor. Thank you all very much, meeting is adjourned.